We see you.
You gotta switch to the Apple.
It's a bullseye. Just wanted to say to that thing, please do have their job that I need.
All they have to do is plug in.
Yeah.
It is beautiful.
All right, we're on, cool. Okay, all right, well, go ahead and get started if everyone would rise to do the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for the Constitution of America.
Thank you, everyone, good evening. And. I'll turn on my iPhone. Um, I'll do a roll call, we have everyone present this evening, we have our brand new newly appointed town clerk, Diane. Congratulations, Diane, thank you for being here. Um, and our first order of business is the minutes, and I have nothing on my screen because my computer's rebooting. I'm glad you helped me out, I couldn't do.
General Chair, I move we accept the town council meeting minutes from January twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. As written, I just have one, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I just saw it.
No worries.
Turn your mics on, please, thank you. Reports and presentation number one, it's it's Tim, right?
Oh, I did see that, too, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ten with an N.
T I N.
Yeah, T I N. Thank you, Jeff, I forgot. Um. Okay, John, can you add on that?
Yes. General Chair, I move that we accept the town council meeting minutes from January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. With the correction of Tim Smith going to Tinsmith, reports and presentation.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Let me motion second, all those favor say aye, Jessica?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes by here. And the treasurer's warrant, next.
General Chair, I move we sign the treasurer's warrant dated two eight twenty twenty-four. In the amount of. Let me catch this up to me, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Thank you. We have motion, motion, I'll second that, um, all those favorite things, or sorry, any discussion?
School payment of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-nine oh eight is included in this. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, Jerry, can I answer these?
Please.
Innovative Surface Solutions, eight thousand and four dollars and ninety-five cents, I know we get our road salt from Morton, is that asphalt or sidewalk salt?
This is the liquid they put on top of the salt to make it look quicker.
Okay, so it's a pre-treat, then? Okay.
Pre-treat the salt, yep.
Okay. Um, and then my other question is, um, I saw a two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollar for Klein State Elevator, did we put a band-aid?
Is that just a quote?
No, that would be annual maintenance.
Does the maintenance for the police department's elevator?
Oh, that, okay, so that's not Town Hall Elevator, okay.
That's true.
Um, and then my final question was, um, three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for R E P Enterprises, which to my knowledge is a trailer distributor in Greenland, do we get a new trailer or a fixed trailer or some parts over there?
It was parts, parts, okay.
Cool, okay.
Cool, any other questions, comments? All those favor of Diane, Sharon, say aye, Jessica?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes by here, thank you. All right, our next order of business is the presentation, um, we have Robin Kerr and someone else here from, um, Mount Agamanticus. Yeah, sorry, what was your name?
Ben Jankowski.
Ben Jankowski, uh, I'll turn it over to you guys, thank you for being here tonight, here's an update. You want to come up, Diane, we'll share the document in a second, um, but you can go ahead and get started.
Yeah, thank you, hi, I'm Robin Kerr, I am the Parks Natural Resource Manager at Mount Agamanticus, and.
I'm Ben Jankowski, I'm the Conservation Stewardship Coordinator at.
Um, and we're here to do a, um, just an annual update.
Yeah.
On efforts at the mountain, but in the process, we are also, um, gonna take you back in time, so this might, some of this is a little, um, it may be a repeat for some folks, um, uh, but I think it's important to take a step back and look a little bit at the history, uh, and especially for those who aren't as familiar, um, so, um, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, Ben and I get to work off that Mount Agamanticus, and, um, we work with some of those partners, I don't know which screen.
Yeah, they're all the same.
Um, so, uh, there is a steering committee of which the town of South Berwick is a part, along with the town of York, and, uh, there are, uh, two, uh, water districts, Kidery Water District, York Water District, and Great Works Regional Land Trust, York Land Trust, um, and Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, and collectively, they make up the Mount Agamanticus Steering Committee and work together on a public access and trail plan for the region. And our job is to implement that essentially, so if you want to go to the next slide, uh, just looking, zooming out a little bit, um, we have the Greater Mount A to the C constant, uh, initiative and focus area, um, and we get confused with them a lot, so just wanted to point that out, um, there's a greater effort conservation, they, um, are, are working to acquire additional lands in this region, but if you go to the next slide, you can see that we, um, we're zoomed in a little bit, our effort is really just South Berwick and York, um, in this Three Hill area and some of these trails in the henchelands, um, is where, uh, our trail management area is identified and in the plan, so next slide.
That's you. My one's me, um, so just kind of to bring people up to speed from where this started to where we are today, um, just a brief history of the mountain, um, historically, it was used in the seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth centuries for timber harvest and for sheep grazing, you still see some of those stone walls in the woods today, those really high walls, um, excuse me, and, uh, then in the nineteen thirties, nineteen forties, there was a initial recreation plan, the Civilian Conservation Corps built the road and started kind of making the summit into a recreation area, then when World War Two hit, um, that land was leased to the U S Army, and it was actually the first Army radar station in the northeast of the summit of the mountain, um, the whole thing burned to the ground in the winter of nineteen forty-four, but the water and sewer infrastructure remained, and that made that land appealing to develop a ski area, um, because it had a road to the top, um, eventually enough funds were raised, and in nineteen sixty-four, the Big A Ski Area opened, and, uh, my favorite quote from that time was, the newspaper headline was, Governor's here, snow is absent, um, and, uh, that was kind of what plagued this ski area, they just couldn't keep enough snow there to make it work economically. At the end of ten years in nineteen seventy-four, um, the developer proposed three thousand condominiums at the summit of Mount A, and that's when residents of York and South Berwick kind of banded together and rejected that proposal, um, and that started what became the conservation initiative, really.
Sorry, what year was that again?
Nineteen seventy-four and nineteen seventy-five, um, and the land kind of sat there with questions for what to do for a while, um, grassroots groups kind of fundraised, and in nineteen eighty, the town of York voted to buy the old ski area, um, and that kind of started this effort to block development, around the same time, there were a lot of environmental studies done, really realizing what was in the area, and that led to, um, the various land trusts and the state, um, buying more land in the eighties and nineties, and that went from being just the ski area to, you know, tens of thousands of acres now, um, and that effort's ongoing today, um, I remember growing up in this area, Mount A was kind of the place to go party in the woods in the nineties, um, and, uh, you know, there was a feeling kind of that people weren't doing what they should be doing with this land, it was kind of being loved to death in a way, um, and that's kind of what led to the landowners getting together in nineteen ninety-nine and saying, let's try to steward this a little more actively together, um, and that's kind of how we started.
So, like Ben said, there was a sort of an effort to sort of inventory, um, what is, was in the area, um, and, uh, this is a graph taken from beginning with habitat with, uh, the state of Maine, and, um, uh, Mount A is significant, um, in part because there are all these species and plant communities found in this area, um, and not so much in other parts of the state or even, um, New England, so we have twelve rare animals, twenty-one rare plants, nine natural, rare natural plant communities, and three significant habitats to include mineral pools, um, if you go down, I'm gonna go through some of these pretty quickly, because there are a few. Um, uh, so, uh, these species are here in part because we have one of the largest unfragmented, largest remaining expanses of undeveloped forest, um, thanks to the conservation efforts, um, we are in an area where many species are reaching their northern and southern range limits, so we have things like chestnut oak and flowering dogwood that you would find further north, um, and also red spruce and balsam fir. And, next slide. It's also, um, an area with, um, one of the highest concentrations of wetlands and mineral pools in the state, and it's a very busy map, um, you can really see that, um, and again, wetlands are deemed very significant, uh, habitat, and next slide, and that really sets us up to the array of diversity, um, that's found here, so we have all those rare species, but certainly we have, well, I don't, I want to say moose, but I haven't seen moose or sign of moose in a while, but there's supposed to be here, um, deer and bear, um, certainly, uh, porcupine is a common sight, um, up at the summit anyway, um, I really like this table, I've shown it before, um, I don't know if you guys can see that, but it's, it's basically lists the acreage requirements for different species, and I like to point it out because the turtle, the Lanning's turtle, which is a state listed species, uh, has the same acreage requirement as, uh, deer and, uh, turkey, and that's, um, uh, one hundred up to five hundred acres required for that species, so, um, uh, that's what makes Mount A significant in part, and then next slide, and then there's.
And it's also a valuable public resource, too, um, you know, there is really nothing else that has this vast trail network and, you know, this changing terrain, elevation, and in this area, I mean, you have to get in the car and drive pretty far and find something else like it, um, and that's really made it a destination for all types of outdoor enthusiasts, you know, everything from hiking, mountain biking, birding, snowshoeing, hunting, and hunting season, um, and people who are just up there who can't really access the outdoors but want to be able to see it, um, you know, you can drive right up in places, um, and that could, you know, pretty unique, um, next slide, um, all those things come with impacts, um, back in nineteen eighty, when the land protection effort started, things were just kind of here without any active stewardship, um, you can see a very eroded trail there, and, uh, so we've done some work to try to mitigate those impacts over the years, and you do next slide there, um, and, you know, humans do have an impact, everything does, um, we've done a lot of cleanup work, um, just in terms of picking up garbage, getting out there, you know, dealing with squatters over the years, um, you know, stopping people from having fires without permits out there, things that you wouldn't think about, but it happens, um, the next slide, and, uh, you know, everything does have an impact.
I think the next slide shows more of that, too.
More depth.
Yeah, so like Ben, we have, um, the water and the ruts, we have trails that go up and down the fall line, um, many of the trails we inherited, um, from the ski area, but also old roads that went through flat, um, wet areas, so, um, that previous slide showed, um, some, uh, amphibians actually nesting, there are egg masses in the trail, so is it a trail, or is it a stream, is it a pool? And so, a lot of our work early on was just trying to determine the best places for that, so there's been a lot of work over the years, um, remediating these trails, um, and what we sort of inherited, um, um, so gonna go through some quick slides showing, um, sort of some of the early, uh, look back at the early, uh, stewardship efforts, and initially it was just, um, managing people, getting them to stay on designated trails, getting them to park their jeeps parking lot and not drive on the trails, uh, this slide shows our efforts just managing water, so there's managing people, there's managing water, getting water off the trail as soon as possible, getting people up and over uh, wet areas or moving trails around and getting, uh, water to drain off and slow down, um, next slide, and then cleaning up some of those dump sites, this is actually a before and after, this is an, um, former, uh, public works director helping us out with a cleanup effort, um, one of those, uh, areas that had been squatted on, um, over the years, and then just, you know, outreach and education, our work began, you know, just trying to reach out to some school groups and also, you know, starting to get volunteer recruitment and sort of reaching out, uh, that way as well. And then the results were pretty immediate, um, and you can just go through some of these, there's just before and after shots, does anybody remember the old pallet bridge on Norman Mill Trail? That's much safer now, um, some fill work, a lot of hands, intensive hand labor, uh, but results were pretty immediate, um, defining the trail tread, and the next slide shows, um, some work done to reroute a trail and put in a switchback on some of those deeper sections. Work is grown to transform the Learning Lodge, um, uh, our sort of nature center, um, and more and more work with schools and programming and reaching out to, um, the public. And then next slide, so this one, um, I still, I've been there a while, so I'm like, this is new, but it's actually, it's not that new anymore, um, uh, this is our Big A Universal Access Trail, so this was exciting, not just because we could bring everybody out onto the trail, even folks with mobility disabilities or people with young children in strollers, um, but this was like our first trail we got to build that was new, um, all the others, we were like fixing and repairing and closing and rerouting and just trying to work with what we had, but this was like the first one, um, we were able to design, which was exciting, um, so, and then more recently, some of the newer efforts, um, infrastructure improvements, um, and, uh, that was just completed this past season, um, so we have new parking areas, actually, there's a third one, but it's a little satellite lot, um, and, uh, composting restroom facilities, so we were able to, uh, upgrade those from portable toilets, which, um, was huge, along with these infrastructure projects, um, came, um, uh, an admission fee that was implemented this year, I don't know if folks have heard about that, wasn't so super popular. It still isn't, um, but, you know, the town, we needed to find a way to, um, offset, uh, budget deficit, um, and, um, and also with, you know, expanded infrastructure comes the need for additional operating support, so, um, still working on that one. Oh, so, so that's, that's a quick look at, uh, a look back, and now, uh, more season highlights, uh, what was here?
Yeah, so this is just kind of some of the bigger projects we've worked on over the summer, um, you can see our April trash cleanup in the spring, um, installation of a culvert with a couple of our seasonal crew, um, and a lot of our work is still remediation, it's, you know, trucking out gravel and filling in wet spots, um, or, you know, building a bridge over, you know, a boardwalk over a place that needs it, um, and we were able to pick away at a lot of that stuff this summer. Some stuff is a one-time project, you know, a culvert's gonna last in the ground for a long, long time, but invasive plant work, that's every year, um, we're out pulling things, identifying things. This year, that was a particularly big challenge because the parking project brought in seventy tons of new fill material, and a lot of it turned out to have invasives, um, so that was early detecting what's here that wasn't here before, and let's get it now before it's out of control, um, so.
General Chair.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the Zoom is not working, I just got a notification from a citizen that's trying to work that, um.
Do you need to, do you need to admit people at the top time, or is it people who entered the waiting room? Where are you ready to, um, like, right in the middle of the screen, it says some people have entered, have entered the waiting room in black? Oh. Yeah, just to submit. No worries, thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Forgot that. I guess. Okay. I'll just drop it to you. For everyone who just was admitted to the Zoom, um, room, I guess, apologies, um, some technical challenges, um, we are in the middle of a Mount Agamanticus presentation, um, please watch the recording back, if you missed about maybe ten minutes.
Yeah, these are just some more season highlight photos, um, we built a couple ATV boardwalks this year, um, trying to improve our search and rescue trails a little bit in that capacity, um, another, I say the hardest thing that we do, um, is manage the summit for shrubland, it's, uh, basically the same thing you see across Marshwood High School in the Powerlawn corridor, it's, uh, you know, the idea is to leave the shrub species but remove the tree species, um, so we do that to kind of create this young forest that attracts different types of, of animals that wouldn't be there otherwise. Also, at the summit of the mountain, it has the co-benefit of making this incredible view, um, that said, it's a lot of work, um, so we go through manually, you know, on hands and knees with saws and cut about four acres of trees out of there every year, um, so that's done with our crew and volunteers, so that's just kind of the last big piece for twenty twenty-three, um, education.
So we also have another person that works at, at Mount A, um, year-round, uh, she's part-time, Naomi, uh, Denzmore, and, uh, she put together the Outreach and Education, uh, report, but just some highlights there, uh, the Learning Lodge is open seasonally Memorial Day weekend through, um, uh, mid-October, um, she did add some additional days this past season, some additional Fridays, um, and building some of the displays and trying to incorporate more of the history, um, for registered groups, um, there were on, um, over thirteen hundred registered visitors, um, that used the group, uh, used Learning Lodge last year, including, um, over eight hundred students, um, and then there was also, um, twenty-two public programming offerings that she led or co-led. And the next slide, highlights some of the special events, that's Naomi and Ben, and the Bumblebee.
Naomi's the Bumblebee or the butterfly?
She's the one with the butterfly. Yep, um, so some of those special events included, um, uh, Imagine a Day with a Water Program, so it was with the Water District, Sewer District, and some local schools, um, talking about water conservation, we have an annual event, the Big A Fifty K, that's a fundraiser, um, people actually run all three hills three times for that event, um, we also have another trail challenge, it doesn't sound like such a challenge after you think about a fifty K, um, but it is, and then a big effort this year with the, uh, Milkweed and Monarchs, um, and the Mayor's Monarch Bridge. Next slide. Um, and then we continue to have our online presence with the website, um, we've done, uh, visitor use survey, uh, we have done a visitor use survey for the last eighteen years, um, so really some good data and tracking our trends, this year we had over, uh, five hundred and sixty surveys completed, um, the big map is on the left side, I'm sorry, on the right side, uh, we've updated our brochure and map to feature all of the trails, um, that are open for public use. Um, I did bring a few extra copies, they're on the table, um, over there, if anybody would like a new copy, um, and then there's also, uh, a gift shop that is available in person and online now, so those are some of the highlights, uh, for Outreach and Education.
Cool, so these two pictures just kind of show how much of our work is really dependent on partners and volunteers in addition to our group, um, we have a pretty active, uh, trail adoption program, we have nineteen people who are committed to regularly going out and looking after certain trails, um, we do monthly workdays in the summertime, um, each one with a different theme, sometimes it's build a boardwalk, sometimes it's let's paint the barn, um, it's, you know, kind of whatever's needed at that time, um, and then we also host larger work groups, too, um, we had, uh, a group from the North Dakota come up for a day this past summer, um, they told us to anticipate twenty people, they showed up with fifty, which was great, but it was a lot, um, but yeah, no, it's awesome to have those groups, I'm planning to have them back in the spring, um, and then we get occasional corporate, corporate groups, too, like Liberty Mutual will deal a workday with us, something like that, um, which is terrific, our work couldn't happen without partners and volunteers, um, and just kind of looking into the future, um, you know, they have the parking project behind us, um, the town of York has it in the budget next year to look at a design phase for renovating the lodge, um, and kind of what that's going to be, um, so we're just starting to talk about that and have those discussions with partners, and, you know, the lodge, I think it's been there long enough now that most people think it's an iconic building, so I think a lot of people want it to stay, um, and again, you know, we want to expand what we're offering educationally. Um, the other thing we just finished with the partners is updating the Mount Agamanticus, uh, Public Access and Trail Plan, that sort of guides the work that we do, um, that's where we get together and say, all right, what are our big initiatives for the next ten years? A big one for us is getting culverts in place at stream crossings, getting ATVs, bikes, people out of the water on trails, um, it sounds simple, it involves DEP and Army Corps of Engineers permitting in some places, it's complicated, um, and it's expensive, um, so it's trying to find funding sources as well, um, so that means just a few more pictures of our group, and then, uh, this photo I really like just because it really highlights the vastness of the area, you can see second and third hill in the background and see how much is protected, um, and, you know, that was millions of dollars over the years, that was tens of thousands of stewardship hours, kind of didn't make that what it is as a local resource, um, and South Berwick's been a part of that, and I think it's really unique, I don't know of any other partnership like this in conservation, and I think there's, there's something to be said for that.
Yeah. So, we're again trying to go through those pretty quickly, and won't take up any more of our time, we do, I did, uh, print out, um, a few extra copies of those reports, if anybody would like, um, one of them on the table for you, um, but just finally want to express our sincere, um, appreciation and gratitude, uh, for past support, current support, and continued support, um, like Ben said, we can't do it without our partners, so really appreciate that, and just want to give a quick shout out to, um, Pat Robinson, who's been around for a while, I know she's, I saw her on the, on the Zoom link, um, a supporter of us for as long as I've been here, which has been a long time now, and, um, John Brannigan as well, who, um, uh, represents, uh, South Berwick on the Steering Committee, um, for the town of South Berwick. So, again, thank you all very much, and we're happy to answer any questions, oh, I wanted to also say, I have another handout out there, we're hiring, so, um, we are looking for seasonals, um, or not just seasonals, but, um, it's a seasonal position, but it's a long season, it's not just a summer job, um, we're looking for folks to start in April and stick with us, uh, through, um, the fall, and the hours vary, so if someone just wants to work a couple days a week, we can talk, uh, so, uh, would love to get, um, a full, full crew on board this year, so there, it's on our website, so, um, those reports are as well, so if anyone wants more information, just agamanticus.org. Any questions?
Yeah. Just have a quick one, um, I'm looking at the Steering Committee kind of page, were there any committee meetings in twenty twenty?
In twenty twenty-three? Yes, there have been, I have not updated that, I need to, yes, there have been.
Every other month.
Yep, every other month.
Perfect, um, and then my other question was, are you, are you properties, um, with the York River Wild and Scenic Designation, is that?
So, some of the same partners are in both, but we are just outside that watershed, so we haven't really played a role with that effort.
I just really appreciate that there's a lot about the history of Mount Agamanticus that I didn't know about, so, this is informative for me, thank you.
Agreed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a request instead of a question, um, I was wondering if for next year's presentation, you could possibly provide a locational map of where, where the deer can exactly be found this month of November, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Know where, know where you want to hike to.
So, we didn't, we didn't hit on it very much, um, right now, uh, tonight, but, uh, there's Hemawalia Delgid, I don't know, so there used to be areas, we, I don't know about November, but like deer occurring areas, where it was absolutely, you're right, in the Hadrage, but, uh, with Hemawalia Delgid, they're like.
It's changing.
It's, it's changing, but they are at the summit, actually, I remember I was closing the gate last night, I saw two right by the barn, so, there's that.
When you listed, there, there's deer up there, I'm like, no, there's not. It's really not. It's really not.
Anyone have any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming. We really appreciate the time. Thank you. Thank you. They're welcome to stay, but don't feel like you have to. All right, that was good. Thank you. That covered our presentation for the evening. Public comments. Anyone in the room that wants to make a comment? No? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business number one, Chapter 130 Vehicles and Traffic. Tim, what's going to be the point person for this?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council. You'll find the packets that there is the in blue, we need to find the language that Phil Soss in town attorney drafted. Then my office drafted the actual document on the back page, which is what we need to finalize for the vote. To pass a motion, Doc, you don't have to have another public hearing because you just changed the content of the, we just changed the word. So those are outside of that. So it's your request to do as you please with. I don't, at this point, because of the lateness of the season, I don't think we have to pass it as emergency legislation. I think you can just let it go and wait until it's back, what, thirty days later? I think that's fine. Hopefully by then we'll go, be almost over and we won't have to worry about it.
Okay, so I don't have any questions? Can I ask comments? Okay, so given that we do not need a public hearing, because the changes have not been substantial enough to warrant public hearing, we can just make a motion to adopt this this evening? Great. All right, so I will go ahead and make a motion to adopt the to adopt, adopt the changes to Chapter 130 Vehicles and Traffic as written.
Sure.
Questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Jessica?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Look, aye. Aye, motion passed this time here. Thank you. Unfinished, unfinished business, item number two. At our last meeting, I believe, we got an update. Yeah, it was our last meeting because we just talked about the minute. Tinsman joined us to give us an update on the Great Works Regional Land Trust effort to purchase some land along the Salmon Falls River with good news for them, but it changes our situation a little bit. So this is just a brief update for everybody. This past fall, we had an item on our ballot to basically ask the town for approval to first spend two hundred and fifty thou, I guess donate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Great Works Regional Land Trust from the Undesignated Fund for the purposes of purchasing property, purchasing a piece of the property. And then also a second ballot item that was, I'm not going to get the language right, but was around the idea of the town owning that property. Because that was a requirement as part of one of the grants that Great Works Regional Land Trust was looking for. If I am remembering correctly, please. Am I? Was there anything?
What's that?
I just thought I was hearing that way for a second.
No, that was me. I was asking a question.
Oh, sorry. I lost my train of thought, but in our last meeting, the situation had basically changed to where the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is no longer needed by Great Works Regional Land Trust to purchase the land. But given the language of our ballot item, or sorry, yeah, ballot item, we were kind of unsure as to what we do with that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, given that the South Berwick resident adopted it. So Tim, I'll let you.
I emailed Phil Soss here. I was supposed to be in the packets, which I don't know why you smell that.
We have it.
We have it.
We've got it.
You do have an email from Phil Soss here?
We have a snippet.
We have, we have something. We, I don't think we have an email from Phil.
Yeah, no, that's, all right. So that's the highlighted piece in the yellow.
Okay.
That's Phil's response. And so as Phil had said, it's exactly that it was crafted specifically, crafted specifically for, and if you remember when we made that motion, the Council of Corakas specifically wanted mentioned for that lot of land, that, that map and law number specifically for that. So Phil's answer is that if the town wishes to instead give those funds to Great Works Land for different purposes, including to purchase a different piece of property of general operations, the town needs to vote to authorize such an expenditure through a new warrant article. So essentially, it's exactly as I advised you at the meeting. The money has to go back to the Undesignated Fund and you'd have to draft any warrant question to give them.
Okay. And so if I remember correctly, with Tim last time, I think if we were to include a warrant article for the annual town meeting for the June election, that would be plenty of time for them. Like they, they don't have a big timeline. I don't know what the scoop is with like ballots and stuff as far as lead time on that. What do we think makes you want that?
We need, I think you need sixty days, correct?
Town needs sixty days. Only sixty days. Sixty days from before the election. Got it. Okay. Is this something that we want to do and put this out to the residents either at the town meeting or the ballot to consider spending the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars differently, but still for the same project?
So I'm confused because I was not at the last.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like they got the grant for the full eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, so they didn't leave our two hundred and fifty. They didn't need it in order to purchase the land.
Correct. Yep.
So
And it was a donation of one of the
Thank you.
Was donated four hundred thousand. So Ken advised us that they no longer needed our money.
So is the plan for us to still take over stewardship of the land?
No.
Okay.
So yeah, so the, the last of the, the one of the property owners donated the property, no, making the whole point of spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, from us to purchase land to move, it's no longer necessary. And then also the town ownership thing is also no longer necessary.
Okay, so then I don't understand without them coming to us.
They came last week and were basically like, we don't need this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase the land, but we would still love for you to entertain still donating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or some amount for stewardship, infrastructure, things like that, except for something other than purchasing.
Which I'm, I understand that, but I'd like to see a plan before I went with money.
I think that was included in our presentation. They had kind of laid out some details around what they had those, not in, not in, you know, crazy detail, but I'm just struggling to remember.
Oh, good. I just
Okay.
They wanted, Madam Chair, they wanted to, they wanted to put some money aside for the parking lot. They also wanted to do
Some trails.
Trail work and add some new trails. They cleaned up some other trails, but that didn't amount, I don't think, amount of two hundred and fifty thousand.
But that, that's, that's my only concern. I'd like to have a solid number. Sorry. I'd like to have a solid number of, or our best guess hasn't been on what they're looking for. I don't want to just give them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and say, here, go do what you want.
So you can't do that. That's not how the Undesignated Fund operational system works. You have to have a very specific something to give it to. You just can't, say, oh, just take it, use it for
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Get it back to.
Yep.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, if we were to do this again, we would need specifics from Great Works Regional Land Trust as to what the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars specifically would be used for, so we can include that in the language.
They would need to like give them a proposal to the town council, to the manager's office, requesting those funds, just like they did this last time.
Okay, okay. Okay. Yeah, Pat, you can.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to remind you that this, these funds were used as match for some of those several funds that we got, those other funds. So it, it does behoove us to, the town to still give the money because of the match.
But I think the concern, Pat, is because the language that was used to have the fall item in the fall.
Right, I understand that, but it's just that, I mean, it just sounds like you're talking like, well, maybe we won't do this, but I, you know, and just give the money, you know, take the money back. But I just think it's, it's something that we should, we should do and put it on the warrant, whether it's the town meeting or the June ballot.
So I think given the update from the legal team, we're going to need Great Works Regional Land Trust to kind of start over the process that we have done.
I understand that, but, but I, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying that I think that, you know, you should just really push getting this vote, a vote yes on this from the town. And reason being is partly because it's been a match and the funders might not like a match being taken away.
Yep. I think this will just be kind of an ongoing topic for a few weeks. So I think we'll need to relay to Tim and others that we need them to kick off similar process for us to pursue putting on the, sorry, writing a warrant article for it.
Yep, you got it. Thank you.
But there, anything else?
No.
Does anyone have any like fundamental concerns or anything with, with putting it on the warrant?
This is your discussion time for this, this piece that I did. It's a figure opportunity to discuss it.
So I don't, other than, I don't like the word being used of match because we didn't match anything. We weren't matching funds like we do with a state job.
No, no, no. The, the match thing was we had committed by vote from the town to say we are contributing money and Great Works, that they needed a commitment from local towns in order to get specific grants.
Right. With that being passed, not muddying the waters, it's like when we bought the house for parking lot. We can't change that because that's what the town voted on that warrant article. So we just need to, whatever, whatever they bring us, as long as it's a detailed plan, I have no issue supporting it. Not, but I'd like to see a detailed plan when we go to present at the town meeting. We can explain to people where their money's go. That's all I was looking for. Like you said, I'm in support of any conservation of land. I always have been.
Yeah.
Just get that info.
Just about the logistics of that. So I mean, the way I look at it is the town voted and approved something that's not going to happen. I mean, there's nothing that has to happen on our side, right? It just, it just evaporated, right? Okay. And there the public's education of that it evaporated is essentially watching this and getting it from talking. Okay.
Yeah.
So in presentation at a public, your public meeting last time, your last public meeting, the director who originally put his name on this, assigned for this, requested all of this. Tim Smith stood in the podium and said, we don't need your money. We don't need this. So now the money will revert back to exactly where it first came from, the Undesignated Service. If they, and again, if they want to do something different, they have to go through that process. They'll submit something to you and you'll have to decide whether or not you want to move forward.
Yep.
And so forth.
Okay, so I'm, I'm assuming somehow Pat, Pat will probably relate this to Tim or you.
I'll call Tim this week and have a conversation with him.
Okay.
Manager.
Yeah.
Also, just to have it said publicly, it doesn't have to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they request. Even if it could be a hundred thousand that they request, correct? Because it's a brand new question at this.
Yeah, exactly. And at this point, we're starting over.
That's why I was looking for a detailed assessment. I want to see what you want. You want fifty for this, 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 I'm good, but it's got to be, you want to press, put it on the warrant. It has to be a designated amount. So yes.
Great. Thank you.
It's kind of an elephant in the room and I don't know how we could figure this out, but I'm just wondering why the warrant that the town voted on and was willing to give the money, why wasn't that money used for the purchase? And I, I understand that they, because the condition was, is it was a baseline for grants federally, locally, or whatever. So why didn't they put the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the purchase and then find the other funding to make up the difference? It's just a curious question of if that's what we were giving. We wouldn't be in this predicament if the money was used for what the town approved to spend it. So I'm a little
I think the issue is that the language in the, in the ballot items is very specific about these lots. And those were the lots that were donated by the landowners. So they no longer needed to purchase mine. And we specifically said this money is going for this property, not this other property. And so the property that we allocated this money for was donated.
Okay.
So if, if our language in the, in the, um, on the ballot item was less specific and was just like
Yeah.
it would be less of an issue, I think.
Thank you for the clarification. I was confused myself.
No problem. All right, any other, anything else on this one?
No.
Nope. Okay. All right, we'll move on to new business number one, Update Property Tax Stabilization Program and Funding, LD 646.
So you've seen the bill and exactly what's happened is in this, when the state funded this, they put in the original bill that they may pay back the town the amount of money. They did not. They only funded that back at fifty-six percent, which means we only got, fill in the actual numbers you want to give them. Okay.
They still owe us sixty-nine thousand eighty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. That's the amount that's in question.
So we're short on the revenue shortfall. We shorted out that amount of money. So in doing the state state has submitted a new LD, a new public bill, six forty-six, to do an emergency passage to get this passed so that they can front all the communities at a hundred percent. So that's, there's no action to take. I'm just appraising, appraising you that right at the moment, it's, it's up for discussion. I don't, I talked to Tiffany, but I think she's in session tonight. I think, correct?
She's in committee.
Committee, so, you know, she's in favor of the bill. She needed about the exact amount. We sent that to her. Without it, we're going to end up with a, we start closing out this year with a sixty-nine thousand dollar shortfall in revenue, which in reality will hurt us. Hopefully they get to the point of passing this and funding it at a hundred percent. The purpose, the reason they're saying is that because of inflation, revenue, state revenue was down. So that's the purpose of that.
Because the intention originally was to fund all of it. Yeah.
It said May in the bill.
May, okay.
Fantastic plan. So where's the, where's the money coming from that they're going to raise for this?
All right, so that's just an update.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see how it goes. Anyone have questions or anything? Okay.
Luckily, it's only a one-year thing.
Yeah.
So we've done this. So one more time.
Oh, true.
I do have a question. Does this impact the school budget at all or do we just kind of?
No.
I don't know. No. If the elderly's rehabilitation, that was a cast, they never voted. They've gone to a lot of discussions.
I mean, unless it's, it's the state's money around or something, it's not within our control. Okay. Any other question? Okay. Um, new business number two, traffic light funding.
The state has awarded
You're loud enough.
The state, the state, yeah. Where the state has posted their work plan and I'm pleased and happy to say that as I identified to you, you'll see that halfway down the page, it's highlighted that highway construction rehabilitation down in South Berwick for five hundred and twenty thousand. CAP sponsored the bill and it's beginning at the Old L Dau Highway extending north, going two oh miles Paul Street. So it got passed, it's out, and now they're going to, so they should start. I would anticipate I would anticipate next month that they'll start with the R R P process. Getting someone to, or getting either writing it or getting it ready to blow out. So they can get the project going.
Just question on this document. So it says twenty twenty-four South Park, like our project is listed for twenty twenty-four. Is that, does that mean? Whereas other ones are in other years, like they're starting this this year?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. And essentially, M D O T is spending five hundred twenty thousand dollars on. The design.
Right.
What they allocated.
Right. They're gonna, so they're gonna, what they're gonna do is they're gonna put it out to R R P.
Yeah.
They're gonna hire, they'll look at the engineers, do what we're doing right now for the building.
Yeah.
They're gonna do the same process and then. Um, hopefully we'll get some proposals. Whatever they have, whatever they pick for an engineer and a design, then they'll start designing it, bring it back to us to show us. What it's gonna look like, or what, what the design will be incorporating laws and statutes and so forth. And then bring it back to us for conceptual ideas and changes.
Okay, so the go-forward process for this is essentially, there'll be points where um. Whomever is selected through the R R P process will come to us once they've done some work to kind of get our feedback and stuff. And there'll be various points throughout the design process, we think.
Yeah, we'll be involved in design process. Um, but the state will have to, so once you, once you, and this involves both federal and state monies. So now there are federal requirements on how you're gonna cross your t's and dot your i's and. So they're gonna handle all that stuff because it's come with some paperwork. Uh, but once they get the design process, they'll be hearing, they'll be designing phases that I'll have to go through, we'll have to go, they'll probably take somebody with us. They'll probably, my suspicion that it'll be in Augusta, it'll end up going up there. And going, having long, all-day design meetings with engineers and state engineers and so forth. When we're all done, that's when they'll give us something to take back here, to present to the public in a public hearing and do that.
Great, thank you. I think this is helpful to kind of lay out for people what the process is gonna be. Anyone have any questions?
Uh, Tim, just a definition question. Under the scope, it says reconstruction P E only. What does P E stand for?
Planning and engineering.
Okay, thank you.
So, so it's planning, engineering, and then it would be. Uh, F D, which is final design. That's the next step up from this. So this is planning, engineering. Then, once we get that all done, which we glue, glue the surveys, include the rights of ways. And all that, then they'll go to final design. Then they'll craft that final, do the same process, craft the final design. And then, once that's done, then they put that out to bid for construction. So re- realistically. I would say we're. Three, probably three years out before you see the ground. May, may, could be longer depending on. What they go through for process and how fast they get this done. So this is the plan, planning, this is the longest stage here. This is what they're gonna do. You'll see them out in the summer surveying Main Street. Um, surveying all the rights of ways, getting all the, you know, the sewer systems right now, because, so they can get it all.
Yeah, cause I was just, I also saw that on a side note, um, we're also scheduled for. Um, bridge and improvements over the Salmon Falls River and it said P E only, and I just did not know what P E meant. So now I understand it's planning and engineering, so it's just.
Any other questions or comments?
So, um, I think if somehow update the traffic study page with this information. And somehow, I think there needs to be some communication up to the public because people are. Um, confused as to where this is in process because of kind of the timing and it's, takes a lot of steps. Um, so whatever we can do for public outreach to better inform people and to keep that page up to date would be great.
I mean, I think I would hesitate for us to put out any timelines at this point, but just to kind of say. The state is, is gonna spend five hundred twenty dollars towards the project. Things are getting started, I think is the, the key message. Cause I, I worry about putting any timelines out there because one is not under control and two, the ninety-one, two thirty-six took a lot longer than we had expected to, so.
Yeah, Jim.
Yeah.
So yes, that was my plans. All right, I don't put anything in public until I film the council first. I tell you folks and then I'll put it out tomorrow or the next day. But you guys get the information for us.
All right, anything else? Okay, we'll move on to number three, tip monies approval. Again, um, I'll just kind of provide an overview first over the, um, we'll actually have them outside you.
That's exactly what you said, what you see there. So, in the process of doing downtown revitalization plan. The committee opted to spend uh two hundred twenty-five dollars on childcare costs for their public. Informational night or their, their workshop night, three hundred fifty dollars on food costs. Not unusual, it happens. Um, lots of times we'll do on these projects, we'll set five hundred or a thousand dollars aside for spending monies. We, we didn't do that this time. We didn't think about it. That's normally what we do. There's also another option, we could take the money out of. Um, the economic development contract is flying. We could have done that, it was such a low amount. But if it's to come out of the tip, you can't come out of the tip without your approval, so it just needs to be.
Anyone have any questions or?
So you had a good turnout for the last one. I was downstairs while you guys were all upstairs. Any idea how many kids were in childcare?
It was reported out at Monday's meeting six.
Good. Excellent, thank you.
Um, so. This request is um, rep, is like, is paying for what's already been spent.
Correct.
But from a, from the tip fund.
Right. Um, there's a plan to have another, correct? I thought I heard that there was another potential one. Should we, should we raise so we're not going back in time again to?
I think that's kind of what we're trying to kind of court, court script here a little bit is. We kind of missed this previously, and so we're making the motions to kind of reconcile the one that's already happened. But then for future ones, ideally, we'd have enough lead time from the revitalization committee to be able to do the same thing. Am, am, am I, am I correct?
That's correct. We have three meetings until our next public.
Okay.
So there should be plenty of time.
Madam Chair, yeah.
I just have a question about the wording of it says to approve up to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, for childcare and up to three fifty in food costs for each of the two workshops. Does that mean two twenty-five total for both workshops or two twenty-five each and three fifty? Like, I'm a little confused on the wording.
Two twenty-five and three fifty for each.
Um, I would also just like to counsel to know that when the committee brought this up in the committee. Um, I was the lone no vote. Um, I just wanted to. So I've never seemed hypocritical. I'm also going to vote no tonight if we vote on this. Um, one of my concerns was that I felt like we were being specific to one demographic in our town. To get them to come to the meeting when we have a varying demographic in town. Um, it also sets a precedent for other special workshops or meetings. Um, that we've had in the past and will have in the future. Um, and also, six children getting to daycare, I don't think warrants to be spending. Another two hundred and twenty-five dollars for six children. Um, and food costs, we were begging people to take food home at the end of the night. So I feel like it was almost, I don't want to say a waste of money because Aubrey makes a fantastic selection of food. And it was very scrumptious, but I felt like we were more wasteful than not. And so just to let you know, I will be voting no on this tonight.
I sort of agree on the food topic. I guess there was a lot, I wasn't there, but if there was a lot left. But I think what's a better question to ask, how many adults were there because the kids were able to be there? Because they had childcare. Cause I mean, frankly, the kids are just here, but what, how many adults? Were there two parents per kid? Do we know? I don't know. But I mean, at least, there were at least six adults.
Correct. I would be comfortable, and I think Melissa too, both being on the committee, just to um. Approve the two twenty-five and the three fifty for that initial. Because we're still, we're still in our retrospective of how this public workshop went down. And then in the future, we'll have enough time to adequately either request it from the tip or from the business budget.
Or just like adjust the numbers or take a different approach. Yeah. I think that makes sense if we motion to just, just for the one that's already occurred and then we can deal with. Future ones in the future. That works, that's okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and then make a motion to approve two hundred twenty-five dollars in childcare costs and three hundred fifty dollars in food costs. For the workshop that I heard a few weeks ago on a date I don't recall. Um, in the Wright Pierce downtown revitalization project, um, and to pull those funds from the tip fund.
Second. We incurred it, we gotta pay it.
Yeah. Um, okay, we have a motion at second. Any question? Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Jessica?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Nay.
Aye, motion passes four to one. Okay, um, so I think just Jessica and Melissa, you guys can do it. Bring the, like, try to let us know if we can take care of them um, ahead of next, ahead of time next time. Um, okay, uh, that is all of our business for this evening. I'll turn it over to Tim and Jen for comment or support.
I'm gonna pop ahead and slide to the chair boldly.
Tim, you should just turn out your microphone. I feel like it gives you problems.
Is it giving, can you hear now?
Yeah.
Okay, turn it down. Relax up, I'll, I got a thank you note from, we got a thank you note from a citizen, two citizens. Um, who've been dealing with long-time issues. I say long time, two years, two or three years with the. Um, Historic Commission, and this notice for the code enforcement officer to thank you note is to. And it was with sincere appreciation, Rita Jenny, a very special thank you. Um, she helped them bridge the gap, what they needed to do. Uh, Mero Jenny, what would I have done without you? I apologize for not uh thanking you sooner. But. Um, I didn't finish this conversation at the end of the meeting. Finally able to revisit the outcome and put this ordeal behind us because of you sincerely, and it was citizen Simon, so. It's just a nice thank you for the code enforcement officer who went kind of above and beyond. Um, for that.
You can, for the record, would you say someone from the Historic District?
Yeah, I'll, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
From a citizen. Uh, town agent, so highway, nine hundred and fifty tons of salt have been used, which is below normal. The average is around twenty-two hundred tons so far. Um. Forty-five hundred gallons of liquid calcium has been used and that's gets spread on top of the salt. Gray Hill Road subdivision has a washout in the storm and probably gonna have to wait till. The water table gets down lower, it's spring or summer to get in there and fix it. And hopefully we don't have another major flooding down in that area. Hoopas Sands Road will be fixed in the spring. That needs to be stabilized and will be taken, they'll need to get into root bed for that one. Belmont Bridge, uh, exploration of the string is, which looks good underneath the decking. The deck has been worn down by two inches. It's twenty-three years old. The deck will be replaced in July or August. That contractor's going out soon. Police department had two arrests, three accidents, one hundred twenty-seven traffic stops. They have initiated a community contact program. Officers will be stopping by downtown businesses. They introduce themselves and all the shifts. They'll be getting out of the cars and walking Main Street. Um, on the police department Facebook page, we'll be showing off, showcasing an officer of the week each week. So the public can get their face to know you with who they are and get them out public. Quiet about that eighteen calls yet today, is forty, that eighteen calls last three weeks, yet today is forty-two. Um, the firefighters are conducting hands-on portion of firefighter rescue, which is training for this month. Um, the chief has been visiting the schools and businesses with security fire alarm boxes and fire alarm system, sprinkler systems. To get up-to-date emergency contact information, verify that the keys are correct and gather information on each of the fire alarm sprinkler systems. Uh, this information will be added to the fire records program, allowing firefighters to have the most. Up-to-date information in the event of an emergency. So when they go on a call, their computers on the trucks, they can. Bring up the address and they'll tell them exactly the location of the sprinkler connection, exactly if it says zone five, what zone five is. So they'll have that. Code enforcement, three building permits, two plumbing permits, two open violations. Um, planning has two projects and final plan. They're in front of a planning board.
At the library. They have four new public computers that were set up by an I T volunteer person. That's great. Uh, Lee started a new program, um, lunch with a town employee. So he's gonna do one every month. It'll be on the third Tuesday of the month, starting on March. Thank you. In recreation, they continue to have lots of programs going on after school and in the evenings. The senior program, they have their Valentine's Day luncheon tomorrow. And they started a new chair yoga class on Thursdays at noon time. And everyone seems to love the instructor. Nikki said that even some of the seniors were saying, you're not, you're not charging enough, which she said was very surprising here from the seniors. Um, accepting, the measure in this portion of the reevaluation by K R T has started this week. Everyone should have received postcards in the mail prior to, prior to getting that knock on the door for a request for an interior walkthrough. And they'll also be measuring the buildings, taking photos of the exterior only. And they are starting in the sections of the R I A zone and the B one zone. And their names, photos, and their vehicles are all on our website. So if they're, if they're concerned, they can go take a pic. Look at the pictures and see if that's food on their property. Um, also, the police have all of their information as well. So, they're in marked vehicles. Uh, the town clerk, as we all know, February first, Tyann is the colleague. It is now a new town clerk. Congratulations. Absentee ballots are now being issued and we have a drop box outside available for convenience. The clerk's office is now offering weddings in the office and here on the third floor. They have two different um, programs, one to do it quickly in the office, or you can have up to ten people and do decorations up there.
That, that's act, that's, so I did that out of town. And believe it or not, that's a big hit. There, there's something about, sometimes people show up and they just want to get married right then. And. I'm telling you, I, I, I was a witness to, I don't know, probably ten weddings in my time.
So that's one of the first things Tyann's implemented. And the second thing is, we have a save the date for November twenty-third for a rabies clinic. That will be held at the fire station as well. More information and details to come as we get closer.
Yeah, awesome. Would you please also, we didn't put this down because you didn't say, would you inform the council about your toys in the chalkboard for the kids?
I'd like to announce that the clerk's office is kid-friendly. Um, I have a chalkboard bowl painted on the um, the wall as you come in. So if you bring your kiddos and they're giving you a little bit of a rough time and you want to give them a quick distraction, you just ask me or Candace for some chalk. And draw the nice picture. Um, we also have a toy box with a few goodies. So bring kiddos on in, we like seeing them. We also have tattoos, temporary tattoos, so we're fun, we're the fun husband.
Thank you.
I'll be in in the morning. I can't wait.
We'll give you the chart.
I hope so.
Tyann is on about customer service. Something about that. The transfer station, you have a new director. His name is Tom Collins and he's gonna be starting on the twenty-second of February. Jeff Murray, who um, had stepped up and the interim, is now being promoted to supervisor. He'll be in charge of the day-to-day activities of the transfer station. And all the staff at the transfer station is educating the public on what items can be recycled and why. Um, they're really keeping a close eye at having people dump out their paper products into a tote to make sure there is only paper in there. Not electronics or tissues or any other items that don't belong. So that's been a big help. Um, economic development, um. Denise was at the downtown revitalization plan committee last night. And for myself, I. And for myself, I have had twenty eight business meetings and eighteen staff meetings and I was on vacation for a week. So, I'm busy, we are doing our third round of budgets, um, we're gonna be, Tim and I are gonna be working on it, um, full. Uh, you know, fulfilling our schedule the next week or so, then we'll schedule another meeting when all the department heads do a final run through. Um, and talk about more C I P stuff at that point. The workman's compensation audit has been completed and forwarded to the state. And I am in the process of getting some quotes for some new winter print spring here so that when the sun is still up. At six thirty, when we start our meetings, we will not be blinded, thank you.
Say it, Liz. Did that even go?
I think you should just.
You just turn it off, we can hear you just fine, you're good.
I had seven business meetings, thirty three staff meetings. Um, again, the majority of those were budget issues, budget stuff. Oral void interviews, the town clerk position, York DMO's contract negotiation meeting. Police lieutenant interviews on one thirty, uh, now with two citizens in regards to. Issues at one sixty one of Gunfoot Road, uh, completed all the employee evaluations, they're all, everything is now done and in the files. Um, conducted three interviews for transfer station director. Uh, police junior contract negotiations, meeting and we reviewed first draft of becoming, we're back tomorrow, Thursday. Thursday for continued negotiations, going well, we're down to. I think the final, final piece, I hope to have something at the next meeting to present to you as a draft contract. Well, seems to be going good. We've had. Recognitions, I got a recognition, I forwarded that on to you, um, that made me happy that, that was, that was a good thing. Um, then a citizen for the code enforcement officer, on Saturday afternoon, evening, I attended the. Retirement party for three police officers who recently retired, uh, Officer De, De Rochemont, um. Officer Abiba and John Willie had all retired and I attended on Saturday night, presented demo files. And that's all I have.
I have one question for both of you, I've been asked by multiple residents about the assessor. Do they have to let the assessor in their house? And I've been told by raging reasons, my dog, this, that, but I've been asked by three separate people, do they have to let the assessor in their house? And I, I don't, I don't have that answer, I don't know.
I don't have that answer, I will get back to you, we nail it out to the whole council tomorrow, I will find out.
Manager Tim?
Yeah.
I actually stumbled upon a pamphlet from the state of Maine when I was doing my own taxes this morning and it was regarding assessments. And it does say in the pamphlet from the state that we legally do not have to let an assessor in our house. But in all fairness, for the assessment to be done properly and values to be calculated properly, it would be in the best interest. Of our homeowners to invite the assessors into the home.
Correct, but I just.
So there's your answer.
Okay, I'm good with that, I'll run with that, thank you.
And, and I'll be truthful on it, so as we begin, I saw our K R T this morning, or this afternoon down on Old Main Street, I will tell you that. You know, I hope it goes smooth, but you all have, you, you know, we, we generally, the last time I did it. We had for, you know, we had fifty to fifty five, uh. Vote of assessment review areas, you know, people, people don't agree with it and so forth and there are some people won't let them in and then they don't agree with that. And then it ends up getting appealed and, so, you know, we're gonna go there, but, you know, this is, again. We do it accordingly about every ten years, hopefully that. The, the assessor named before Verna, Craig, Craig, Craig had done some of it. And Verna has been doing some of it the last two, three years, we've been doing corrections and adjustments, so hopefully we've kept up somewhat close. So it won't be a shock impact because twenty years is too long, you know, we, at seven years into this, we need to start setting money aside for ten year. Reval, making those plans, not twenty years, so. I hope it turns out good, I anticipate some bumps in the road, be truthful and honest, you, you will see some of them. We'll do the best we can, but it needs to be done to keep an accurate base.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Liz.
Anyone have any other questions for Jen? Okay, counselor comments, um, Jeff?
Uh, the downtown revitalization committee, we have surveys still open through at least March fifteenth. Um, so you can take that right online or the clerk copies in the clerk's office or in the library, um, I also attended a. Plan board meeting along with counsel Ben Hahn, just to talk about the comprehensive plan update and to bring them up to speed on a part of the draft tractors specifically housing and land use. We'll have a follow-up with them, um, so the comprehensive plan is continuing to jump on, that's it.
Jeff?
Uh, I missed the last meeting, but congratulations, Tiana, uh, it's awesome to have you on board, I didn't get to say that publicly. And also, you're already starting off in the tradition of with us with the new fire chief, with the new police chief. Um, starting new projects, I, I love what you're doing down there already, between the rabies clinic, the marriage thing is, is a really cool touch. And, uh, especially the kids thing, I'm looking forward to the chalk wall tomorrow, so thank you.
I'm looking forward to your picture, so thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, Jeff?
Just following through on, on the email that I, I replied to today, if we could put, uh, on a future. Uh, agenda, uh, to kind of go over the historic district commission, um. And sort of take a, a book at what that entails, who's on it, what, what they're doing, um. Just so we have a better idea of it, it'll be good for all of us.
Yeah, I agree, I think that'd just be helpful for us to like, talk about it, but I think we also need to be clear on what is our. Jurisdiction, I guess, in, in that, at our next meeting, I guess, is that real?
Whatever works for you guys, I, if you want in April after budget, I just wanted to talk about it, you know, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever works for you guys.
Okay, yeah.
Recommendation, um, so that, the historic commission is part of the charter. It is in the code.
Yep.
So, I will be glad to put it on whatever agenda you want it, but I would say the first part would be, let's take the code, our condition would be. Let's dive into the code, look at it, see what questions you have.
Yeah.
Um, I've got your, the email as well to see those questions. And I think maybe then the path forward, my recommendation to council would be after that. Schedule, if that's what you want to do, schedule a workshop with the historic commission, have them come in. Maybe have a little discussion workshop with them to see what their thoughts are of this and then that might give you a clearer picture, I guess. Um, just so that we get all, all the bodies in the room together.
Yeah, yeah, can I?
As to my recommendation.
Okay.
So, just, if you, just tell me what agenda you want, you want me to put on next agenda or you want me to wait till. It's like the meeting in April after the budget pass.
I would say after the budget pass.
Yeah, that'll give us time to dig into it and look at it and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's find out.
Or we'll put it on for the second meeting maybe.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Melissa, are you sorry, do you have anything?
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
Um, either, um.
Madam Chair, we go into an executive session, one M S R A, two four five dash six eight personnel.
Thank you, I will second, all those in favor, say aye, Jessica?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero, um, we'll take a second, uh, you wanna meet in here, Tim? You wanna meet in here?
Yeah.
Okay, just real quick for the Zoom, um, the council's going into executive session, um, and we'll be adjourning afterward, so we'll cut off the Zoom. See everyone next time.